Let's go ahead and get our regular study session for this evening started. And just because of the latency with Zoom, let's hold all of our questions to the end and then get all the way through the presentation and then ask our questions.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate this opportunity and I appreciate you allowing an additional 30 minutes for this study session discussion. So this meeting was really predicated on the initial goal of this meeting was really to start to have council engage in some of the design components of City Hall. Given some of the community feedback that we received and feeling like they weren't informed and educated of what had been happening related to City Hall. We thought we'd really back up and talk about the evolution of our community and obviously the municipal service delivery and ultimately tie into the City Hall. So we do have Paul Wember on here and probably in probably the last 15 or 20 minutes, we will turn it over to Mr. Wember and he will start to engage the council on the space layout and kind of how we've tied public space and the staff space together. And then we do have, and you'll see it on the future tentative account calendar, I believe it's on July 7th. We have added a couple hours to to do what we were originally going to do this evening and it's probably actually better from just getting your feedback on that entire time. But we really felt like it is important that the residents are heard and they have the information that they need in relative to the work that you guys are all doing. So tonight, again, I'm going to be taking some extra time to really talk about the potential for City Hall and that and how that fits into the Castle Pines evolution as a community. And there's, as you guys know, there is so much positive momentum and change happening in the community and and that'll be presented this evening that I know it can be hard to keep track of even for those that are doing this on a daily basis, much less people who are out living their lives and trying to keep up with what's happening. Here we go. So this, this council and I believe future previous councils has been very focused and used words like purposeful and intentional thoughtful. And I certainly again can speak for this council and I think it is the true intention of this council to create this community of Castle Pines. That's been our motto for a while. We are creating the community of Castle Pines, really without losing what we value most. We have the governance leadership and momentum really to ensure that we can leverage the growth that is coming inevitably coming into the community to create those benefits and this community benefits for all of Castle Pines, both existing residents and our future residents who are going to become part of the community. Whether those are new trails, those are recreation opportunities, road improvements, anything. Again, I believe you and speaking to the residents who are listening or watching later, your council, I believe, is very purposeful about making changes that build the community, want the community where we can live, work and play. So I'm going to start back at our beginning, our humble beginning in 2008 when the city incorporated at that time. Hold on one second, I have to move my picture around here so I can, so I can see everything here. In that time, the city in 2008 was half the size that it is today. So really thinking about 2,400 acres, the green area that's highlighted right there, we had, it's actually, I think closer to about 3,600 households. We changed the number later, you'll see it. We had a population census count estimated just over 10,000 people and that number is a little high. We changed that commercial square footage as well. It's really closer to about 270,000 square feet of commercial in the area that most people know of as Castle Pines. And when we incorporated, we actually incorporated in Castle Pines North. At that time, as many of you are aware, the role of the municipality was really focused on the road maintenance, which we had taken over from the county and the land use, which we had taken over from the county. The other activities were either handled in some fashion by the Master Association or by the Castle Pines North Metro District, both organizations currently exist. The Master Association is in the process, active process of dissolving. And then I'll speak to the Castle Pines North Metro District later on. And so shortly after incorporation, we, we, the council at the time rezoned the property on Legay south of the Commercial District. That included 249 acres resulted in 631 residential units at the max and a maximum of 560,000 square feet of commercial. Then in 2009, significant annexation occurred known as the Canyons. We don't refer to it that way and you'll hear some of that in a little while, but it is technically called the Canyons. And that added 3,343 acres at the time, 2,500 residential units, 2.1 million square feet of commercial. And I might say this again later, but the core area of Park Meadows is 1.6 million square feet. So if you can picture that, that internal part of Park Meadows, the main mall, that is 1.6 just to create some magnitude for you. And then shortly thereafter in 2012, the city annexed and also zoned property further south on Legay, going down to about Happy Canyon. And so that included an additional 354 acres, 527, I'm sorry, 520 residential units and another 700,000 square feet of commercial property. So in, in three to four years, we truly doubled our size and significantly improved, increased the amount of commercial and residential potential development within the community. So we are now one city of 10, roughly 10 square miles. And one of the things, and again, you'll hear me say this in a little bit, is the city council has been very focused on making sure that we are the city of Castle Pines, we are the community of Castle Pines and we are segmented, segmented into different metro districts or subdivisions, but we think of ourselves as Castle Pineans. So, so that's the physical expansion that happened. And so, so thinking about what we were back in even pre 2008, much more of a bedroom community, we had the, the commercial area that was really home-based focused, you, you had the grocery store, you've got the dry cleaner, you've got the nail shops, the things that you all know are there. Now, the next several sections are that I'm going to talk about. There's really three additional sections in here and one is the development application and what comes with that. The second is really looking at the public investments and the, and what occurs from and is allowed through those development applications. I guess there's four actually. And then the, the, the components of those development applications and those annexations really provide some of the core, the core assets, whether that's land or otherwise, that allows the city council to bring those community values to life and create those assets for the community. And then finally, really what those demands are for the municipality and how we've grown as municipal service delivery and tie that into kind of where we are in, in the actual conversation around the City Hall. So before I go much further, one of the things that I think is incredibly important is to really appreciate that the dedication and perseverance that all of our elected officials have had since 2008, starting with Mayor Shaw, Mayor Huff, and obviously I've got great respect and appreciate working with Mayor Radloff and her currently seated council. And it's, it's really through that, the perseverance of these elected officials and the time that they put in that has allowed everything that I'm going to speak of to happen. This doesn't just happen through osmosis, this happens through very intentional action of our elected officials. So very much want to appreciate the mayors and all of the elected officials and council members who have served. So really what, what occurs in here, if you think about it, our landmass more than doubled in size, the potential for development is realized because all of these annexations and rezonings come with land or come with density that can be created. We had, not that it was a good thing at the time, but at the time, obviously in 2008, nine, 10, depending upon where you start the clock, we had the Great Recession. So all of these physical growth boundaries occurred, but then nothing really happened because we went into a recession. What that allowed to an extent was the city council, I think, to get solidified and the staff and really start to say, okay, we've done all this initial stuff. Now we need to really start to create those guiding documents that are going to help inform the future decision makers and those obviously seated at the time about what to do and how to act as these applications come in. So for the next several years, a lot of the work that was done was really focused on creating those planning documents that and then it's guiding documents that both assist staff, they assist the development community and obviously they provide direction and guidance through the council review and approval. So in 2016, we had the comprehensive plan that is the most overarching document that we have that really sets that long-term revision for all of the aspects in, in terms of what defines the community. Shortly thereafter, the 2017 Parks and Rec Plan was completed and I'll refer back to that in a little bit. Also in 2017, there was a transportation master plan that was completed. And then in 2018, the council under Mayor Radloff really, I think, took a very proactive focus and provided a clear direction to the, to the city staff that we needed to play a much more active role in economic development when, within our economy. And, and really that's, that's not that it wasn't happening in the past, but if you think about what has occurred over the last several years, the momentum, especially for the commercial development was really starting to hit, hit the high stride. We had Shea developers, Shea and their builders on the east side of the highway really coming out of the ground. We had a lot more interest of people saying, oh, there's enough rooftops, we might be interested. So I think the timing was perfect for the council to provide that direction and say, we need this economic, economic action plan. And it's really a tool that staff has now at our fingertips when we're engaging with developers or builders or business owners to talk about what types of partnerships, what the goals of the city council are. And so that was a relatively recent, so council provided that direction in 18 and we completed that plan in 2019. And then also in 2019, the wayfinding plan was created and approved by the city council. And so the wayfinding plan, you might be thinking of it primarily as it's a signage plan and, and it is in at one, at one level. But what it really is, is a comprehensive, I don't know that marketing is the best term, but really a cohesive document that starts bringing together the entire city. As I said, it's incredibly important to the city council that we not have disparate communities within the city of Castle Pines, but that folks who live south, northeast, northwest, southeast, they all feel part of the city of Castle Pines. And one of the ways that you do that in communities is you create a similar feel as you're driving through the community and you have those, whether it's the signs with the, with the city logo on it or is depicted here on the left, upper left-hand side, that's a potential rendering of what the I-25 and Castle Pines Parkway overpass could look like. And, and you'll notice that the top of that, as well as the stone, is really taken from the original developments within Castle Pines. And then we're working with the folks on the east side to try to incorporate some of those components. So no matter where you go within the community, you feel and know that you are part of the community of Castle Pines. And so the wayfinding plan provided everything from these major, these major monument signs all the way down to trail signage, which you will see all throughout the community as those trails get developed and we start to implement the trails master, the wayfinding plan. So it really covers all of it and, and HOAs can, can take from it. It's kind of a family of a family style document that you can take parts and pieces from as redevelopment occurs. Signage obviously reoccurs in the, in some of the existing HOAs. And again, we're going to work with developers into the future and make sure that these components get built in, creating the one community of Castle Pines. All right. And then shifting to the active development. And so for those of you who may not know, a, an annexation or a rezone creates, well, in, in an annexation, it creates an understanding of how many units are going to be built, what the densities might be, how much commercial property can occur. And then the zoning really deals with what those land uses can be. And a lot of times it's up to a certain number of units per acre. It doesn't mean that there's an actual application in front of you. It's just a landowner who is getting what we, we typically call entitlements. So when you have that piece of property, you know that you are entitled to X, Y, and Z on that property. Obviously, most of us live on single-family lots. And so what we know is allowed on that lot is our home and a deck and possibly a shed, depending upon where you live, those kinds of things. And so really what that does is set the framework for the future. Some people, they, their, their role in this process is they buy a piece of property, they get an entitled and then they go find somebody to buy it with the entitlement or they find a builder who's going to build what that is. But I think it's really important to understand that those, and I think we'll communicate it here in these next several slides, but the, the annexations and those rezones are really kind of the broad brush and they don't truly set the picture. And again, that's why I think it was very prudent for the, the council to create those planning documents that I just identified because each, each subdivision has to come in through for its own review and approval. And so having those overarching documents helps provide direction both for the developer, for the staff. And obviously they were approved by the city council. So they provide guidance to the planning commission as well. So, so these next slides are really starting to talk about what occurred then versus what we've actually seen come to fruition over the last many years. So starting on Legay, moving south from the Commercial District. And just as a reminder, it was about 249 acres. When it was originally addressed, it was at 639, I'm sorry, 631 residential units. That's what then stands for now. Through the various development applications that have come through, those 500, 631 residential units have actually been reduced to 561 residential units. The 560,000 square feet, and I'm going to drill more into this later into the presentation. But as you can see, that's actually currently proposed at zero right now. So that's about a half a million square feet of commercial that was originally anticipated, really on the east side of Legay primarily running between Castle Pine, I'm sorry, between I-25 and Legay, running south from Castle Pines Parkway to Happy Canyon. So that's what occurred on that one. Slider, moving down Legay, moving south on Legay. So this is 354 total acres. Originally, it was proposed at 475 single-family homes. Right now, what's proposed is 778 single-family homes and 200 multifamily then, and still proposed at 200 multifamily units and 500,000 square feet of commercial in this area. So that increase in, in single-family homes looks relatively significant, but part of what is occurring is there was a rezoning of a piece of property on the east side of Legay, again, between Legay and I-25 that had been, was an exaction from the city at the time for parkland. And it's been rezoned to allow for, and again, I'll talk to this in a little bit, allowed for single-family residential. And so that rezoning occurred and it's under contract for a single-family product that I'll talk about shortly. But it really goes to the transition that I spoke of a moment ago of the commercial moving into more of a residential, because this whole area on Legay really has turned into a residential piece. There is one area that I want to refer to because it's separate. It's the white area at the bottom. If you can see my mouse moving around here. This is about, I want to say about 150 acres roughly. And the 200 multifamily units and the 500,000 square feet of commercial is all within that area. And that is, there has been no development applications. That is from the original annexation. So we don't know what the then and now will ultimately look like because the property owner hasn't taken any action to come forward with the city with a development application. All right. Then on the east side of the highway, again, I spoke to this earlier when we annexed it, it was 300, it is 3,343 acres. Originally, it had 2,500 residential units. What is proposed now through several PD amendments is 4,000 single-family homes proposed now and 1,000 multifamily homes. And then this is the area that I spoke of that we've got the 2 million square feet of commercial. So if you can see my mouse up there, the commercial and mixed use is really up in this area. And so the thousand multifamilies and the 2 million square feet will be up in here. And I believe we have a slide that I'll drill down into this little bit. Shea Homes had bought a thousand acres in this rough area here and have 2,000 of those residential, single-family homes under construction. They're actually moving forward right now with their phase two. They've been building homes. We have new residents over there. Couldn't tell you the number at this point, but I know we've got some very happy property owners over there. And then the remaining units will be built over on the south side and, and down into this east area here. For those of you who are wondering what this corner ultimately ties into, that's Crowfoot Valley that runs between Parker and Castle Rock. And ultimately, we believe that there will be a road built that will run from Crowfoot all the way up to Castle Pines Parkway. This right here is the exchange. Hopefully it will be opening again soon. Mayor Radloff, this is where we, when we get to your State of the City presentation, that is one of our areas that we plan on doing it. And it's a, it's a pretty, pretty exciting opportunity. This middle picture here is the covered bridge. If you haven't been over there to see it, I highly recommend you're driving down a hill right here and you make this curve and it's a beautiful entrance into the, into the residential neighborhood in there. And then this, the exchange is also offer operating as their sales office right now, kind of is there, how do you find your way around and all that? Because they've got themselves and I believe five other builders as well. All right. So staying on the east side of the highway, this area, I want to start with this area on the right-hand side. So all of this beige color that you see, those are the allowable building envelope area. So that'll be the residential and the commercial up in this area. They're not exact in size, but they give you the perspective of, of what's going to happen. And so when I said the residential was going to be over on that east side, that's what is still in the proposal stage. It's just on the books, no development applications have come forward. This of course is, I think folks know is Shea up in this area. And then this is the commercial area of which this is a zoomed in version of here. So this is just a concept rendering right here. This includes the 2.1 million square feet of commercial that I spoke to earlier and also includes at least 1,000 residential units. We really anticipate that it's probably be closer to 1,500 at this location, but he is required by agreements to build at least 1,000 of the residential units within this area. So one of the ways I just want to spend a minute on this and several of you have heard me say this, that probably one of the best descriptions I have, if you've been to Southwest, South Glenn, rather, in Centennial, you drive into South Glenn, there's, there's kind of a main entrance, they have a fountain in there and I believe it's a movie theater that's at the back end and it's got a parking garage and kind of is a main street feel to it, if you will. Retail office residential within that area. And that's kind of what this, I believe, is, is intended to be. Again, there's no application. So we don't, we don't know on the commercial area. What we do know, which is incredibly exciting and part of the momentum I spoke of at the beginning is the owner of this property has contracted to put the sewer line in as well as there is a gas line that's required to actually be brought under I-25 from the west side of town, under I-25 to bring a gas line via XL to serve this property. And so you obviously can't build the vertical until you've got the infrastructure in place. So this is a significant move. And to emphasize that, we are and we have just about completed the, what we have completed, the pre-application process for a 320-unit apartment development project over on, in this area over here. I can't tell you exactly what parcel it is over here, but over on the east side of this area right here. And that can only be started once that infrastructure is in. So we anticipate council seeing that this year and ultimately the developer going vertical in 2021. So really exciting because as I believe all the council members are keenly aware, one of the biggest limitations we have on bringing retail and commercial into our community absent the current economic situation is really the number of rooftops. And so all of this really is in service of creating that community and ultimately a sustainable economic environment. All right. So just a quick little summary on the then when we started. So these are the more accurate numbers that was, we didn't get a chance to change at the beginning. We, we incorporated at 3.7 square miles. We had about 3,700 residential units. We had 272,000 approximate square feet of commercial. What is now on the books, if you will, is 9.5 square miles is our community. We have almost 10,500 homes on the books and just over 2.9 million square feet of commercial. So what our existing commercial is about 10% of what we anticipate seeing into the future. So with that comes additional folks and, and folks who want to come to Castle Pines, want to be part of the community, want to be residents, want to call themselves Castle Pineans. And so this, this is just a quick slide to show again, those numbers where we started, where the census estimates put us at now, which is about 11,200. And we put 2040 in there, not because any of us know what that build out is going to look like, but when we do our transportation, our traffic studies for our transportation plans, we're currently using 2040. And so it's a good just arbitrary date to kind of pick, but sometime in the future, based upon the current average units per resident and the number of residential units we have, we'd be looking at about 31, 32,000 people in our community. So a threefold over what we started with back in 2008. So obviously all of those residents moving to the community, they're, they, they don't want to just move into a home and then drive somewhere to, to enjoy something. They're looking for trails, they're looking for parks, they're looking for open space. They're looking for those ball fields, they're looking for, we're in a rec center, obviously looking pickleball, whatever those activities are that you enjoy, those things that you love about Castle Pines. The more that we can provide those services and those amenities within the community, obviously the better. And so what I'm going to walk through now is a quick timeline of some of those more significant investments that the city has participated in. So I think our capstone, our pride and joy from a park perspective certainly is Elk Ridge Park. So this was done in 2011 in partnership with some land donated from HOA One, also the Great Outdoors Colorado and obviously the city of Castle Pines. So it's about a 45-acre park. It's got a heavily used field on it. It's got the, the splash pad, which I was going to tell you this during my update, but we're planning on turning that on and opening the restrooms up on Friday. So that'll be something that the community and especially the kids can come out and enjoy this upcoming weekend. And obviously we've got the playground and the picnic areas as well. So truly a pride. I think it's a, it's amenity that not a lot of communities have and certainly of this magnitude. And so super exciting, especially back in 2011. In 2014, prior to 2014, the library for Castle Pines was in a, in a, the bookmobile that would travel around. And for those of you, if you haven't been Travel around and for those of you, if you haven't been in the library, in the back of the library. And I'm going to get the quote wrong, but it basically says something along the lines of a city is in a city without a library. And it was a incredibly strong desire of the community and the council at the time that we create a permanent home for the library. And so the, in two thousand and fourteen, the city purchased the land for the library to build their building. That was the agreement that was made with Douglas County Libraries. And in getting some history from Mayor Huff at the time. He provided some great detail about the really intense and intentional conversations that were done there. That the city wanted some space and really looked at a ten-year leaseback to recoup its investment, which was about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I'm not sure the exact number off the top of my head and really thought that that ten-year was a sufficient. Value return for that investment, obviously, plus having a library and also provided those ten years for the city. To figure out where its permanent home for city offices, the council chambers were going to be, but fully intended that this was an interim solution. And then in two thousand and sixteen, and I'm sure Mayor Radloff was, was at the grand, grand opening. There was ribbon cutting and the library moved in and obviously we moved in as well. In two thousand and nineteen, within Elk Ridge Park and thanks especially to Councilmember Mulvey and her work with the. Parks Authority as well as the National Fitness Court folks, we did the ribbon cutting for our first outdoor fitness court. We'll see how heavily utilized it is, we may end up adding some additional locations. It's a relatively, I believe it's a forty by forty site plus grading and those kind of things. So it's a, it's an amenity that you can move within neighborhoods relatively easy if there's ultimately a demand for it. If you haven't been out there, I encourage you to use it, it is open, maintain your physical distancing at the moment. It is not, it is not maintained, so you'll need to bring your own sanitizers. There's also an app for it, we can provide you some additional information if you're interested. But I have a lot of friends who have used it and they say it's an incredible workout. So again, another great amenity and you see it here in the darker blue within this area. Also in two thousand and nineteen, and I believe the conversation actually started in two thousand and eighteen. But the city was approached by Dog Nation, which is a nonprofit disabled hockey organization. That had the, had a vision or has a vision to build the first disabled focused hockey rink in the nation. All hockey rinks that are built right now, none of them are built to address the sleds that disabled hockey players utilize. And so over several months in conversation, ultimately, the city has signed a letter of intent being basically saying that over on the east side of the property. South, just south of the commercial area on some land that the city owns. That we would provide up to, I believe, ten acres for a three-rank disabled and able-bodied ski, hockey arena. And so that conversation has been ongoing. The, similar to what I described last week with the, or two weeks ago on the city hall. They're very much in the process of working on the design, working on the architecture, trying to figure out what their total cost is going to be. They've been doing that for months and months. And then because it is a nonprofit, they are going to embark upon a. National fundraising to be able to build and maintain this facility. There is a significant community value for this, I mean, one, it's, it's, it's a hockey rink. It can also be used indoors for, I believe it's lacrosse, soccer. I want to say there's something else, but you can, you can put some stuff over the ice. We're not sure that it makes fiscal sense to put wood over the ice and have the volleyball and the basketball within this facility. They're still working on that, but there's also a significant financial benefit because. And, and I'm going to throw out a number that may or may not be accurate, but I believe it was three to five million dollars gross spent annually within the business community. That's hotels, that's retail shops, that's restaurants, those types of activities of people coming in regionally and ultimately nationally for events. And hockey tournament, tournament, tournaments, tournaments, very easy for me to say. At this location, the Colorado Avalanche are. Loosely tied in at this moment, and I know there's a strong attempt to, to see if this could be even a practice arena for the Avs sometime in the future. So a lot of, a lot of great stuff happening in this arena. And the council's action of signing that letter of intent really said, hey, this is something that we care about. It matches the values that we have, both in hockey and the activity and certainly in the, in supporting the disabled hockey players. And so while not in place right now, it is something that is actively going on and we're working with them as they come forward to us. And we do have that, that not, we don't have it in our hands yet, but it has been completed, the fiscal impact analysis for, to, to the city. All right, so that's kind of the physical piece of it. In this next part, we're going to talk about both some physical pieces, but a lot in the value arena too. Because as I've said numerous times, and I really want to make sure I'm, you know, it's coming across loud and clear is we are creating the community of Castle Pines. This is, this is not. Bedroom community of which we need to go to Park Meadows, that's not the vision of where we're going. We want to have an inclusive community that really has the, the amenities, the services, the shops that our residents want. And that's a lot of who we are as people and the things that we value. And so a couple, I'm going to hit on a couple of these, and again. Some of this is jumping back in time. But when that Legay property that I spoke of off of Legay, that resulted in ninety-one acres, which included the forty-five for parks, but a significant amount of open space. It also created six acres for a potential school site, which we all know has now become the American Academy. But the council didn't know what it was going to be, but they knew that the community valued and needed a school site. And so those actions led to the ability for American Academy to be there. We won't talk about the one-way road. And then over on the east side of the highway, the original annexation got us an additional fourteen hundred acres of, of open space that we can. Put trails through and we can enjoy fifty acres for schools, one hundred and thirteen acres for parks. And twenty acres for civic uses that were, was, or will be ultimately dedicated to, to the city. In, in two thousand and nineteen, we had been financially participating for several years in a joint partnership with Ruder Hess Recreation Center. Ruder Hess Reservoir, if you're not aware, is owned and operated by Parker Water and Sand. And so the partnership is the county Lone Tree, Castle Rock and, and Castle Pines. And Parker, if I didn't say Parker. And so there is the group that has been working monthly to, to, as Ruder Hess was expanded, to really make it much more of a public accessible. And valuable civic amenity, more than just water bathtub for Parker Water and Sand. I mean, we've all been to Cherry Creek, we've been to, to Chatfield, we've been to Dillon Reservoir, I mean, there's numerous examples around the state where it's both potable water. Tubs as well as civic areas. And so that is starting to open up and we have been an active member in that, and that is clearly a community benefit. As it's right around the corner to us, and so the more we're active and involved in that, the more our citizens can, can enjoy that. In two thousand and nineteen, again, in our, in our growth as a community and the values that we have, over seventy percent of our residents, this was May of nineteen. Supported the council's ask of, would you give us home rule status? And we have, one of the first actions of the city council was to implement an ordinance to go from state collected sales tax to local selected, selected sales tax. We saw significant improvements from having the money turned in directly to us and not go through the state. Numerous benefits from that, but the end result has been a significant increase in sales tax, which again is. These are not new monies, right? These are monies that our own community and our visitors are paying. And we want that money to come back to us as quickly as possible and then be used for the services, amenities, activities that the city council has directed. Also in two thousand and nineteen, and again, give some kudos out to Councilmember Mulvey. She participated for weeks and months in working with the Castle Pines Parks Authority, who ultimately disbanded. And they had, I believe, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the time. And, and one of the reasons that we put this in here is because I think it's a very strong and appropriate statement. That there was an acknowledgement by the board members on the Parks Authority. That the city was maturing, that the city was taking on a larger role beyond what we had in two thousand and eight. And ultimately, when they made that determination to give the money to the city. That was a statement that, that group really felt that the city was the appropriate provider for future parks and recreation services. So. That money then, as I said earlier, went towards, some of that money went toward the fitness courts. We've also got an area set aside for pickleball courts, that was one of the other high priority items. And then really the rest of it, I think is going to come through ultimately the. Public process of, of park expansion, what other amenity, outdoor amenity. Do we want to see? And I'd like to take a moment and stop right now and say, one of the things that the council did shortly after the Parks Authority transferred. That money and disbanded was they created an ordinance for the parks, a Castle Pines Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And that was, even though if you, in the here and now, we only manage Elk Ridge Park. As, as you're going to see, and if you've seen a little bit, our overall management of the city is growing substantially. And so the council really felt that it was prudent to get an advisory board made up of citizens of the community, including, I believe, one is a high school. Seat that is available to, to review some of the ideas and concepts and then ultimately make recommendations both to staff. And to the city council for what our future parks and recreation activities could look like. So if you're interested, contact our city clerk and we are currently receiving, accepting applications for that. There'll be an interview process with the city council, the council will pick the. I believe there's five people who will sit on that board, but we want to get it seated so we can start talking about what that future of parks and rec looks like. So highly encourage you to. Participate and apply if you're interested. Some of the amendments in two thousand and nineteen, the comp plan had some minor amendments in, during this time. And that really set the stage for additional parkland and a more diverse housing op, the options, including mixed use development. Another kind of value and goal of the council really has been to diversify the housing stock that we have in this community. Moving into the, into the business arena for a moment. When you look at the housing costs within our area, when you look at Lone Tree, the, the close-in areas of Parker, even down into Castle Rock. The cost of housing is such that a lot of the frontline workers, the folks who are in our, you know, in our grocery stores, who are in the dry cleaning stores, who are in our restaurants. They're commuting now from, from southeast Aurora, they're driving north from South Denver, there isn't a place to. For them to work and, I'm sorry, to live and feel like that they can afford to do that and continue to work here. We've heard from numerous, specifically restaurant owners in Castle Pines, that they are challenged to find. Folks who will come and work for them because they can work in, you know, hypothetically in Parker for the same amount of money that they can pay in Castle Pines. But they live five minutes from Parker and it adds another fifteen minutes for them to get to Castle Pines. And so they take that job in Parker, the same issue actually is occurring in Parker. There's, there's been stories through some of the manager meetings where even the fast food restaurants, the twenty-four hours are shutting down. Because they can't get employees at night. And so the council has really, I think, taken this to heart and it's really looking at how do we create a diversity of housing? That creates a diversity of people within our community and really creates again that inclusive environment. And so some of the actions they took in two thousand and nineteen allowed for some of that diversification. As well in two thousand and nineteen, there were ultimately two, two development applications that were approved on the east side in the Canyons area. And what part of, within this segment of the presentation, we ended up with a hundred and sixty-seven acre regional park, which is this area. Right up in here, we've thirty-eight acres of parkland right here. So Castle Pines Parkway goes here, turns into Hess Road when it leaves the city. So this is just on that right-hand side, and of course, Ruder Hess Reservoir is right here. So we have two beautiful parkland properties that abut directly up to Ruder Hess. And going back to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, be great, I'm sure council would love to have the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Start to discuss what, what could occur at that. This is a significant amount of land, this hundred and sixty-seven acre park, as well as site for a high school and middle school. Really down in this area where you can see my mouse moving right here. Now, there's not funding for those schools, and I think we're at least on the ten-year window. So it's not that they're going to get built just because we have the land. But similar to what I described with American Academy, this council has created the opportunity for those, for that middle school and that high school to be built. And the school district was part of those conversations, I think they're very excited. It's a matter of funding and then ultimately the growth and the kids necessary to fill those schools. There's also an elementary school planned up in this area within the Shea Development as well that occurred. With the original annexation. Then jumping back over to the west side. The, the beige area was the area that I spoke of earlier that was rezoned to allow for residential. And what was envisioned and currently under contract is a for rent, single, single-family style product. It's not readily available in Colorado, but it was something that the council was very excited to see potentially come into the community. So it's, we put on this slide here, it's non-apartment because it's hard to talk about for rent and people not to immediately jump into the apartment arena. But these are actually attached, single-family units. And we, those people have, I think, almost completed their application process. We'll see if and when that really comes to fruition, but we're really excited about the opportunity to provide that type of housing as an alternative within our community. And we highlighted this little yellow spot right here, this is. A school zone site that when this development was originally, I believe actually was part of the total. Exaction dedication required for school from this whole south Legay area on Legay. But at this point, the school district doesn't look like that they're going to utilize it for a school site. It's substandard size for what they do in their schools, that may change into the future. But I think it really gives us an opportunity, going back to the Parks and Rec, to potentially have some type of neighborhood park in this area. It's on the west side of Legay, so Legay runs up here. While there is a substantial amount of residential, obviously now on, on this east side, the majority of the residential and, and, and the core of. Of the legacy part of, of Castle Pines is up on this west side. And through a trail system, you could easily get down to this park and not have to cross Legay. So I think a lot of benefits for this, and again, something that the council hasn't discussed in any great depth. But the Parks and Rec Board, Advisory Board can certainly assist with that, but we see that as a, as a good benefit. And then this area right here is that area that I was referring to earlier, where there is. These, the five hundred thousand square foot of commercial and the two hundred multifamily units proposed, but we don't know much more beyond that. Oh, these are the other parklands that we have over on the east side, so I was supposed to click on that, so you can. Oh, these are the other parklands that we have over on the east side. So I was supposed to click on that. So you can see that we've got parks throughout the community. And this would be a nice location to have that neighborhood park in this area. This is Elk Ridge. To give you a kind of the size of the magnitude of this, but this one here, kind of the banana park, I believe it's planned for more of the active ball field type of recreation, which at one point had been talked about in this area. This is a strong hill. It'd be incredibly expensive. This is much flatter and I think lends itself much better to that type of use. And then the Dog Nation would go roughly in this area. So starting to drill down into the Civic Center and City Hall. In twenty twenty, the city negotiated and council approved a public private partnership with private developer would buy this piece of parcel right here, which we, which is called the Legay Family Parcel and provide land for a city hall and a potential rec center. A little awkward transition here, but so. Sorry, that it's a strong, strong jump here. So in in looking at the, the role of government, and I'll talk about this in a little bit. In the white area here, which is everything, the green is the Castle Pines North Metro District, but in the white area, the city has negotiated with all of the metro districts to take over all of the non-private lots. And which is what most municipalities, especially outside of Douglas County, have done or do on a regular basis. And really what that, what that means is we, the city will be responsible, as most cities are, for all almost all services. And in our case, water, sewer and fire protection would be the three things that would not be under the purview of the city council. Fire obviously is handled by South Metro Fire and the east side of the city, east of I twenty five. Water and sewer is handled by Parker Water and Sand. And on the west side, it's all handled by Castle Mines North Metro District. A couple of things, I want to spend a little bit of time on this, on this slide, because I think it's, it's a, it's an incredible. It's not very visible, but the long term benefits of what the council is working on and doing. I think has incredibly incredible community value. So before I talk about the metro district just briefly. The metro district is a financing mechanism by which the developer can use the property value through property tax to pay for the infrastructure, pay for the ongoing maintenance. Several months ago, pre COVID, you probably remember there was a lot of articles in the Denver Post about some of the lack of a better word, shenanigans that the metro districts were doing. And it's not occurring in Castle Pines, but certainly within the front range. But the benefit of the community take, of the city taking this over and being under the purview of the city council. You've got one, one location to call. You can call your council member and talk to them about the issue, the concern, the desire, whatever it may be. From a property owner's standpoint, it is, it is our intention, this seated council and and certainly this administration. And I say it's our intention because we probably won't be at the place where the decision is finally made. But when the city takes that over, cities are funded primarily by sales tax. And so the, what's occurring right now is as these amenities are built. So I don't know how to go back, but those parks, those open spaces that I showed you, the roads, well, the roads are cities, but the, the agreement says that the metro district is going to transfer those mills that they were going to use for operations and maintenance over to the city for us to maintain those amenities that are within that particular metro district. It is our goal over time that as the city's sales tax increases, we can reduce the communities and the residential property tax of those mills that the metro district would be charging the property owners for that operations and maintenance. And so it really long term provides. So if you're talking about a ten mil O and M within your district, that at some point in the future, hopefully will go down ultimately to zero. And then it'll be backfilled by the sales tax that's going to come from the additional development on the west side. And obviously that two point one million square feet on the, on the east side. The other thing that does is really preclude or remove any incentive or value for the metro district to continue to refinance the, that debt over a longer and longer period of time. Which as you may have read in the Denver Post articles, many of them have done. And so it really removes any incentive and ultimately need in some cases for those metro districts to exist. Now, it doesn't mean they're going to go away soon because most of the debt for the infrastructure, the water and sewer and those kind of things are at least thirty years. So we're not talking in the short term. But it, we are going to be documenting heavily in, in the city's documentation to provide for future leaders of the community to really understand what our intent was from a financial benefit, community benefit within this. So if anyone's interested in learning more about metro districts or anything, I'd be happy to chat with them at some point. Within the Castle Pines North Metro District, I think everyone is aware they are currently in a conversation with Parker Water and Sand for potential integration merger. I'm not exactly sure what terminology they're, they're using. But we anticipate that that analysis will be done, hopefully within the next quarter or so. And then there would be potentially, if there's agreement by both boards, there would be a vote first quarter or so early next year to move water and sewer over to Parker Water and Sand, which would be nice from a single provider standpoint with having Parker provide for the entire community. And then over the years, there have been conversations between the city and Castle Pines North Metro District about the city taking over those responsibilities. And while I can't speak for the metro district board, I think there is interest and willingness, if the Parker merger occurs for the city ultimately, to use the analogy that you're seeing on your screen, would become all white and the city would be the sole service provider for everything except water, sewer and fire protection. These. I'm just going to jump through here. So everything you see is in the darker green are the areas for housing development of one kind or another. And so all the other areas, the beige are either parkland or open space land, just to give you kind of a rough aerial shot of where development would happen versus the open space. Obviously, open space would be maintained by the city. I spoke of the Castle Pines area along with those parks and all the other public amenities that are there. Roadways increasing substantially. These are new roads. Everyone's aware of the new monarch that went through last year was opened up last year. Shea's continuing to build homes. This is intended, this is a horizontal version of this. This just gives you an idea of what the concept plan that was provided to the city during the application process. You can kind of get a sense of the roadway coming through. Here's that road that I spoke of coming from Canyons, Crowfoot Valley all the way up to Castle Pines Parkway. So the land mass is now turning into the potential for and is being built vertically, all requiring additional services. So here we have our evolving city services. In two thousand nine, we had a very basic public works department. We had planning and zoning. We had building services. We had law enforcement. We had an accounting person and we had a city clerk. In twenty twenty, we have taken substantial, the amount of land use and planning applications is continuing to grow. The amount of public safety, as you can imagine, is continuing to grow as well. Our our contract with, for law enforcement services goes up every year and will continue to go up as residents move in south and east. Our finance department has turned from an accounting department into a true finance department. City clerk services have expanded substantially. As demand and expectations have grown, our municipal court is busier. We are starting to see more trials than we have in the past. Communications, obviously, the more residents we have and the more higher the bar is set for communications, the where we try to reach that. Our building services is busier than ever, both in, in the new construction as well as the redevelopment or remodels and additions that people are doing. Code enforcement is becoming larger issues, more people move into the community, different expectations, different. Yeah, different expectations for folks. Parks, we're in the Parks and Rec world. We don't have events listed on. I don't know if Jolene's watching, but I apologize. We have very actively gotten into the event world. Even things like Dog Nation is going to tie into events ultimately. And then Public Works has become much more proactive and expansive in trying not to just be reactionary and fix the problem. Let's solve future problems before they happen. And we've been focusing that really in our streets, our sidewalks, our storm water and our snow removal areas, I think are some of the biggest areas that we have focus those. So really with a larger community, with, with a community that has a higher level of municipal service expectation, we pride ourselves on that service delivery and we have been right sizing over time to meet the demands and expectations of our community. In, so jumping now, drilling down into City Hall. City Hall has, as I said, relative to the library, it has really been talked about since we incorporated. The council at the time understood that it was not a good financial decision to lease property. I think every community in Colorado has City Hall of one kind or another. And so it's, it's no surprise that councils were talking about that from the early days. In two thousand eleven, this first concept drawing, there was actually a company that was hired to create a complex that would include the Castle Pines North Metro District Facility. The, I believe, was the Master Association and a city hall. And so there was money and drawing spent. Obviously, nothing came of it. But I, I say to emphasize that this conversation has been long in the making. I already spoke about the leaseback agreement with Douglas County really created. And again, Mayor Huff was very adamant in his statement to me that this was very intentional to, to provide an opportunity for the the civic uses to mature, for the staff to mature and give us some time to find a location. And as I've just described, we've seen a significant increased demand for city services and obviously on a limited staff that we have. For those of you who don't know, we have nine point five staff. We have fewer staff than Larkspur. And we have exceeded the twelve thousand population. And obviously, the lane miles have increased and the expectations in the parkland and all that has increased. And so really in May of twenty nineteen, the city council actively, there had been some conversations obviously before that, but very actively in, in early twenty nineteen, revived the discussion of a silly city facility to meet those needs. And so the next slide I'm going to show you is a quick evaluation of the site options and lease options. And I'm going to wrap it up here relatively quickly, council, just because I want to make sure that we give Paul Wember some time on introduce him and have him start to lay out the concepts for the space. How we've been looking at the space. So what council looked at for site locations was land over in the commercial area on the east side of I twenty five in the land that for the civic uses that I referred to earlier. They looked at the piece of property on south, in the south, Legay, south toward Happy Canyon that I referred to earlier as being rezoned for the residential to allow residential. And then they looked along the existing business district, Castle Pines Parkway. So the concern on being east of I twenty five is the council really wanted to maintain a location on the west side of I twenty five. That was a pretty high consideration of theirs. The property down that was rezoned for residential on Legay. The reason I think council supported the rezoning for residential was there's nothing else around it but residential. And so I don't think the council liked that location. It's the geographic center of the city, which is really cool. But we would have been the only thing within a residential neighborhood. So we really would have stuck out. And, and I think it was important for the council that we were part of the commercial of a commercial area, which really put it along Castle Pines Parkway, either on the west side or on the east side. That's what that existing business district meant. Lease office space is incredibly expensive. We're looking at for, this is, you can do the math. That's, I believe, about forty one dollars a square foot. But looking at office space, forty seven hundred square feet would run us about two hundred thousand dollars a year. We're at over two thousand square feet right now. So expanding, we'd be running, you know, substantial amount. And you can't, some of these offices, you've got to take what's available. This two hundred thousand doesn't include moving. It doesn't include remodel. It does not include a three percent growth, which we were told would be incorporated into that budget. So you can see just in a relatively short amount of time, you've you've spent a significant amount of money and really no positive investment in a long term asset for the community. And then retail space, one, there's no viable retail space for city offices in the city hall. But more importantly is we would not want to take potential retail space and put a city hall in that. That is retail for a reason. It's, it was built for retail. And yes, some of it's been vacant for a long time, but that doesn't mean that a restaurant or some other type of shop wouldn't come along. And the last one we would want to do would be to limit the viability of our retail space. Quickly on Safeway, because I know it's been thrown out there a few times, the Safeway lease is about one million dollars a year. It's sixty five thousand square feet. The comp plan has that entire area at some point redeveloped into envisioned rather into a mixed use development. And so and it's about one point two million just to sub that by that internal space in half. And obviously, you're not going to make a long term investment into a piece of property that you are leasing at that amount of money, even if you subdivided it, you're still looking at half a million plus the one point two, give or take, to deal with all the HVACs and putting up walls and those kind of things. Safeway is actively looking to try to sublet it. The property owner, I believe, in the next couple of years will join Safeway in that active. They are actively looking. But I think they're pretty happy with one million bucks a year. And they will get more and more interested as that lease comes, comes to close. And so again, it's not a viable retail space for city services and certainly not something that we wanted, we would want to preclude some other viable retail from going into. All right. So ultimately, oh, I'm sorry. And then one last parcel right across the street. So this is Walgreens right here. There was a piece of property over here that we had a look like an interesting piece of land, but the landowner only wanted to do a lease and the council was not interested in providing building a building on land that they did not own. That wasn't a community asset. So ultimately, their, their ideal site was the Gay Family Parcel. And I've listed a couple of options or reasons for that thought. One is it's adjacent to Elk Ridge Park. And if you think about the idea of having a municipal complex with the city hall and a rec center in this area generally. It's a great amenity and tie into the park. If you had a rec center up here, the Elk Ridge Park plans on having some kind of courts in here. I think right now the council's desirous of seeing pickleball courts in here, but maybe we add some tennis courts. And so having municipal service here with the restrooms and the available parking makes that very accessible and much less awkward than coming in off a mirror of this delay. We have heard from the neighbors over to the west as developments have come in over the many years. Concerns about traffic, noise, lights, et cetera, of any development that's going to come on the site. And so the city being a landowner and a developer within this area really gives us an opportunity to engage very directly with these neighbors. really gives us an opportunity to engage very directly with these neighbors over here and do everything humanly possible to mitigate the impact of any development that's going on this site. So what better way to really assist and work with the community than that? And I mentioned earlier, the city hall being on the west side of I-25. And this is a relatively unique opportunity. It is being purchased by a private developer who is looking at retail over along the La Gue, but has very directly stated that he's a long-term resident in the community and very much is excited and at the opportunity to provide land to the city. I can vouch for the council and myself, there are no strings attached to this. This is truly an opportunity to have a couple acres of land dedicated to us for this city hall and the potential rec center. And then the majority of the funding for the construction itself would come from the sale of another piece of property. So I think this is the last slide, second to last slide. Why now? I'm sorry, Paul, I'm running into your time now. So that we've been discussing this for a very long time. And again, specifically since May, we have already outgrown our space and we did a short-term lease for the building department in anticipation of moving into the city hall within the next few years. Centralization certainly improves customer service, improves our ability to work with each other. We are still on a, we are still a customer service based organization. Certainly we can at times work from home, but we are the municipal service delivery provider for the community of Castle Pines. And that means we need to be in the community. We need to be servicing the community and meeting their expectations and their needs. The current building that we're in now does not have the necessary security to meet any industry standards or best management practices. The city council sits with their back to glass. Everyone is at risk in that building. We are not in a world anymore where we can say it's not going to happen here because we know it happens here. And so that is a, that is a significant issue, I know, for the city council. Our council chambers and our meeting rooms are shared space with the library, which very much limits our ability to even have access to those, those rooms. And a lot of times, if for those of you who were on the charter commission or followed us, I think we ended up at at least three, maybe four different locations without, within the community because we didn't have our own space. Our current lease expires in 2026. And I think that's one of the reasons that the council is actively working on it now is these things don't happen overnight and we need some time to design, plan, et cetera. We all want to own property. That's the American dream. We know that it's much more cost effective and a better investment in ourselves and our community to have a community asset over leasing. And as I spoke to a moment ago, we have a rare opportunity to capitalize on donated land in a location that the council felt would be ideal. So where are we now? We have engaged consultants to assist in the design and the layout. So we can ultimately understand what the building looks like, how it's going to sit on a particular site. And most importantly, to some extent, get an accurate cost estimation that we can bring to the city council for their final blessing, yea, nay, go back to work, et cetera. So over the next couple of months, we are going to be continuing to work with the city council over the final design. There's three real areas. It's actually the next bullet there, engaging the council on exterior design and security. I'd also include the council chambers in that. And that will really help guide the final design and the final cost as we meet with the council over the next couple of months. The property is in closing, the Gay Family Parcel isn't expected to close until August of 2020. So we wouldn't have access to the site until that time. And so all the work we're doing now is anticipation of being able to start some of the site work once the property is accessible to us. And I believe, Mayor, that is my last slide. And I guess I would ask, if we can jump right into Paul Wember, I will, I will stop my sharing here.
So my biggest concern now is we are at 6:16.
I know.
Will we have time for council questions?
We could, I guess we could reschedule Paul. I tried to stop at 6:10, but I went over seven minutes. Why don't we, why don't we do council questions, Mayor, if that's your desire? And we do have time on July 7th.
Okay, so yeah, let's do that. Let's, let's.
Sorry, Paul.
Questions, discussions, and then if there's time, you know, he can come back. But I want to make sure because the, the study session is for council. So, and again, just because of the latency, I'm going to call on people in, in the order just to keep things moving and then we can all discuss. So I'm going to start with Pro Tem Caderas. Melissa, we're in study session, so I'm going to use first names.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for that very detailed presentation.
I think you're sticking with me.
Still here. The, the only question I really have, and I, I mean, I'm familiar with all of this, having been on council for three and a half years now. But something that kind of, I was a little questioning of is, why is Excel going to be providing gas to the retail area over in the canyons or on the east side and not Black Hills? Because they're providing the gas to the residential.
So it's a great question, council member. And what I would tell you is that the, the way that the state was divided up 30 to 50 years ago was not in relation to how development has ultimately happened. And it's virtually, it's not virtually unheard of, but it's incredibly rare to see these boundaries change. And so you're right, Black Hills handles a portion of it. IREA handles almost all of the city, but we have one subdivision that has Excel as their electric provider. So it's just how the state has through the, then the organization and maybe council member Rance has it off the top of his head, but I can't think of the state agency. But they, how they divvy it up and those entities have to work within their boundaries. It just so happens that gas is provided by Excel into this area.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks. I'll look forward to hearing what the rest of my council, fellow council members have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Deborah, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a quick one because, you know, I too have followed a lot of this. But one of the things that I noticed before I began my tenure on council and planning and zoning commission was that when La Gue was, the whole La Gue area was zoned back in 09. It seemed like the business area was really to the south. And there was PA 7, et cetera. And now it, the, you know, could have been the residential ideas for the area Catty Corner to Walgreens petered out, wasn't successful for whatever reason. And now we're moving that business area up because the business area was not, we're, we're looking to put more residential down in PA 7, PA 12 area. Do I, do I have that about right? And that, that shift kind of happened over time or?
Council member, you couldn't have said it better. And I wish I would have emphasized the, the original, you know, if you think about it, we didn't know the canyons was there when those original annexations were occurring, right? And so you were thinking about commercial being down La Gue. Then it, it shifted to east-west along Castle Pines Parkway. And as you just described, the commercial then rezoned into residential over a period of time, maintaining the commercial really along Castle Pines Parkway, which is where you want it on that main thoroughfare. So yes, absolutely correct.
Okay. And then I heard a, my comment is that I've heard from a lot of residents that they really, really want us to focus on creating a community area, a town that's unified, that's central, where things are central. And if we were to have the city hall type of complex, we could have places where people could meet, whether it's part of a rec center or a city hall. There could be meeting places and events like tree lighting or Memorial Day and things like that in that area. I, I had trouble envisioning that at the southern end of La Gue. And I envisioned it easier at the northern end. Even though it's not residential, it's still community-based. So that, that's what I'm looking for.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ben, questions or comments?
Well, thank you, Michael, for the presentation. I've had the benefit of having been here for a little bit of this history, but it was good to see what folks were thinking in 2009, 2011 and how things have changed. And, and I too, as we've talked about it since May of last year and looked at different locations, that location that we're talking about now, I, I think it's kind of a, it looks like kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity to create that central area for gathering. And I, and I don't see city hall as just a room for a city council to meet in. I, just like Deborah just said, I see it as a place for other types of gatherings, our commissions, different committees, et cetera, to meet in one place where we've had to spread out all over town for the last couple of years. It's been difficult and several times I've driven to the wrong place, more than once.
Believe I have as well.
So I look forward to Mr. Wember's presentation. I hope we can make time for that soon.
It'll, plan on July 7th, but we'll send it out on the tentative, council member.
Thanks.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Michael. You know, we had a good conversation earlier this week and I, I told Michael, I said, you know, one thing that cities have too, in addition to libraries, right? Cities have city halls and I tend to believe that. And we're making some very positive strides for the city of Castle Pines. Now granted, I've only been in the city for five years, but you know, it's, I think it's key. Early on, Michael and I had a conversation when, when I was still a candidate for city council about just some of the challenges of being a new resident, trying to figure out who was responsible for what. So the unification of those city services is huge. And it's, you know, I think it's, it's important too, to factor in the fact that the city is going to grow significantly and that it's not, you know, one person who, who's going to be benefited by this, but it's going to be 20,000 people that will benefit from this in addition to the 12,000 residents that we already have. So I think it's some positive developments, you know? And at the end of the day, the location there is going to be prime because Castle Pines Parkway is, is the main thoroughfare. It is our main road through town. So having the centerpiece of the city centrally located on the west side tied into our premier park and that whole community connected feel there is just going to be so key. So I kind of look forward to seeing this kind of fruition as well. Having a location where community can happen, a place where, you know, future council members can hold town halls, talk to their constituents in a, in, in a location that represents the city as well. So thank you for that. It's good to have that history, kind of fill in some of those gaps for me. And thanks for all the time and effort spent on that, Michael.
You bet. Thank you.
Roger, questions or comments? You're on mute. Come, come to us. Share with us.
Sorry.
So Roger, it doesn't show that you're on mute, but I can't hear you.
Megan, can you take a look?
Yeah, I'm muting and I'm muting and it's not doing anything. I'm afraid to kick him out because of what happened the first time we did this.
But maybe. You maybe have AirPods or something that are picking up Roger or?
Roger, I'm going to email you the call-in information so you can dial in if you have any comments. Just give me one sec.
Okay, while we're working on that technical issue, just a couple of things. Wanted to mention the exchange opens in a few days, June 13th. You had mentioned that in your presentation. And thank you for that comprehensive, really kind of evolution of have, how things have transpired. And you know, I just want to reiterate because I know all of us on council, we live here. We live here. I've lived here a long time and I, I've been a public servant for a long time. And it really is important to all of us to recognize that people own these pieces of property. These pieces of property are owned and they have rights associated with those. And we want to, you know, be involved and thoughtful and influence that in a way that keeps the things that we value the most and love the most because we live here. I love, I love this city. I live here and it's important to all of us because I know all of us have expressed that. So I just want everyone to know that, you know, we are, we really are doing our best to serve you. And the question I have, well, I don't know, question, I guess, comment. But you know, when we went into the library, we love being co-located with the library. The library is also a heart of the community. But you know, as that was sized, we were not the same size as a city. And so the demands on the library continue to grow. So you know, that their, their demands for their space increase. I'm sure they would be thrilled to be able to expand into the space that we have. Cause there is, you know, people here in Douglas County love our libraries for, for good reason. And you know, they are growing and accommodating more of us as well. So, um, you know, we do get a great benefit. I, I think it's smarter to not lease something if you don't have to and have an asset, a community asset that you own at the end. And so thank you to all of you who I know are really invested in doing the right thing for this community. And, and really being thoughtful about how we, you know, use that, use our money and, and, and try to create value and benefits for now and for the future that we're on the right trajectory. So Roger, were we able to get you back?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yo.
Yes.
Oh, that's, it's, it's funny because that has never been a problem that anybody couldn't hear me. That's too funny. Thank you, Mary. And I, I agree with your comments, honestly, I do too. And I sense your frustration and I, I agree with it wholeheartedly. And, and my questions and comments are actually going to sound probably like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth because I, I am undecided about this issue. I really am. I, I, I am still open to be convinced. I've not decided what we should do. I'm still looking forward to hearing what the polling of our community says and what that informs us. I'm still looking forward to some public comment. I'm still looking to, to, to talk to more of our residents. I'm still looking to make a decision. So I've not made one. I'm really conflicted. There's, there's, this is a large amount of money. This is a big decision. This is, we only have two pieces of property. This is, this is a lot that we have to determine. I don't think that just a couple of, a handful of, of residents who have a dog in this fight, who have fought every single development idea next to somebody who legitimately owns that property and have come up with every single reason to object to it, should make a decision for the entire city. I don't think that's proper. That bothers me. And so I don't think that their loud voices should shut out all the other voices that have been very kind, very, very thoughtful in their conversations with me. So that has very little to do with my decision-making. I do have some questions though, for you, Michael. When will we have to make a vote? When will we vote? When will we flip the trigger and say yea or nay to vote to build this thing? When, when is there, is there a single vote? Is there a vote that says, will we vote for this? And when does that happen? And will there be public comment? Will there be an opportunity for the city to come out and I'm assuming very loudly, tell us what they think?
Yeah, so, so I don't have a, a date for you. I would anticipate that it's early fall. I mentioned the property doesn't close until August. Obviously we don't want to wait until the very last minute, but we also can't move forward if it doesn't close. And so it'll be sometime in that timeframe. And yes, I would imagine there will be several motions and there'll be an opportunity for, I don't exactly know what those are, but certainly I don't know if they're going to be public hearings. I don't exactly know what those are, but certainly I don't know if they're going to be public hearings. I think that they're going to be more legislative in action. And so anyone who is interested in would want to comment on any one of the various actions that'll be coming down the pike. Would come to the council meeting, speak up at regular public comment period. Obviously, you know, the council would consider that that comment in their deliberation of the action.
Well, this is what I'm this is what I'm going to suggest to them. And I hear that and that is that isn't our rules and that is the bare minimum of what we could do. But I have seen more interest in this. I know you have. I know staff has. I know all council has. I know the mayor has. I would suggest we do more than that. I suggest that we we give the the residents every opportunity to voice their their thoughts. Their thoughtfulness, their their concerns about the building, what their alternative is. Honestly, when given the, you know, the five or six, you know, if you were in my chair, what would you do? You know, if you got to, if you got to raise your hand, what would you do? Would you stay in the library and 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 not move? Would you go? What would you do? I think most of our residents are very thoughtful, have very well educated, obviously. What would they do? I think we do more than the bare minimum. I think we we open the floor up as much as we can. And I would like to, but also like while people are listening and while this is being recorded. I'd like the staff and I already know what your answer is going to be, but I'd like everybody to hear it. That we're going to, we're going to do everything we can to publicize these these meetings and and to to let people know that it's not going to be secret. I don't want to hear anything on Nextdoor that we snuck it in and we surprised them, that we're going to be as as open and transparent about this. As we possibly can, that we're not waiting for another pandemic to surprise everybody about the city hall. That we're going to be as as open and honest and transparent as we can be.
You are correct.
Okay, the last thing, what if we wanted to stay in the library and not move at all? And maybe rent some extra space? Is that possible? Is that impossible? Would the library even want to rent us that space?
So I don't want to put the library in his situation because I don't think they want to come between. Pro city hall and non city hall debate. But I think the mayor hit the nail on the head earlier, which is we have no doubt that they would love to have that additional space. The demands on the library have continued to grown grow. Obviously, everything that I talked about relative to the size of our community. Well, that's the library that's got to serve that larger community. And ultimately, they may be looking at an additional location on that east side. Once there is some critical mass over there. So no, I don't think long term that they want us in there because not that they don't want us as a partner, but they need that space.
And so our library is incredibly busy. I mean, it really is. Into our library, especially the children's upstairs. It's a busy library.
Well, it's it's one of the few and Mayor, I know we're five minutes over time. So but it's it's it is also one of the only places, and I think Councilmember Malvi was alluding to this, that that kids have a place to go. And and so a lot of those rooms are filled with kids after hours, you know, playing games, doing their homework, doing whatever it is. And that's absolutely what a library is, but it's it adds to the needs and and the amenities within the community.
Yeah, thank you for indulging me. I'm sorry. I didn't look at the clock.
No worries. I'm glad we had a chance to answer questions and this will be an ongoing conversation. And so there will be opportunity to ask more. But since we are running over and we posted our meeting for six thirty, I would like to, let's take a three minute break.